I am going to call the July sixteenth meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order and we will begin with the pledge. All right, we have a few announcements to make. This meeting is recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the chair at this time. And seeing nobody. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the selectman's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at Kingston MA.gov. And please check the website for any additional events or notices at our website. Before we do any other announcements, I should also mention that Tyler Bouchard is joining remotely, so we should do a roll call attendance. Eric Crone here.
Member guy.
Don Alkenbrand.
Tyler Bouchard.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
I was just gonna mention the zoning board of appeals is looking for an associate member. They asked that we actively recruit. So if anyone's interested in joining the zoning board of appeals, they're looking for someone.
Excellent. And now time for open forum. Is there anybody here who wanted to speak at open forum or online? I don't see any hands raised. All right, good. Moving on. Our first appointment is a request from Hope Floats to hold their 10th annual memory walk on Saturday, September 21st. If you guys want to make any comments.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth McKenna. I am the new executive director at Hope Floats in Kingston. And we are just requesting permission from the town to hold Hope Floats 10th annual memory walk Saturday, September 21st, 2024, starting at 4 Elm Street with the modified route. The annual community event sponsors our nonprofit centers outreach to provide free bereavement services for local families. We anticipate hosting 400 to 500 participants again this year. We'd like to start between 10 to 10:10 AM. Again, for and it's a three, three and a half mile walk using the route. I do have a map. It goes down by the Adena through the center. And takes usually about an hour to 70 minutes. And then for any members, any members who are not familiar with us, Hope Floats Healing and Wellness Center is a public charity that was started in 2008 in memory of Michael Brack. The core outreach of our center is offering free support groups to families, adults and children to help them cope with a variety of losses. The death of a parent, a sibling, a partner, or from suicide or overdose and more. We are grateful to be part of this caring community with helping families across the South Shore and beyond. And then we just said that we would, we'll contact Chief Holmes as soon as we can, just to go over, you know, the whole entire route and the, the process for the day. And then just some logistical measures are volunteer road crew along the route and major crossings, reminding walkers to cross properly, use sidewalks and to stay on one side. Reinforce the message to participants on the registration form on our website and before walking to be respectful of our neighbors, especially not leave plastic bottles or any trash in the street. Paper cups will be used at a water station and we will have a cleanup crew going behind in a van to make sure that everything is cleaned. And then we'll publicize the walk on the Kingston Facebook pages and W A T D and alert residents on the center cross streets about the temporary inconvenience, which should be around 10:15 to 11:15. And then if anyone has any concerns or questions, I can help with that too.
Any questions from the board? Tyler, anything? Nope.
What day was the agricultural fair? It's not the same day, is it? Okay. I don't think it conflicts. I'm just curious.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the request from Kim Brack at Hope Floats to hold their 10th annual memory walk on Saturday, September 21st, 2024. Contingent upon scheduling of two police officers at the designated high traffic intersections, secure all permits from Mass DOT to utilize state highway route 3A.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, it'll be a roll call vote. Eric, I.
Him, I.
Don, I.
Missy, I.
Tyler, I.
We're good. Thank you very much. All right, the next item is a request for approval of road closure for a block party at Woodland Avenue. We received a request from Mark Trobridge of Woodland Ave to hold a neighborhood block party on Friday. What was that? Okay, on, on Friday, August 9th, from 4:30 to 9:30 PM. Mr. Trobridge is requesting that the road be blocked off at 11 Woodland Ave to host their event. This was sent to the police and fire chiefs along with the superintendent of streets for review and approval. I think there's a recording that's just still going on.
Sorry Tyler, it's funny. Your Tyler I keeps coming through over and over.
There it is.
What's going on?
We just every now and then we hear you say Tyler I, just in the middle of nowhere.
So just so you know, you're gonna be voting affirmative on everything.
I put it on repeat so I can go for a jog.
Clearly. All right.
I guess it's coming, I guess it's gonna message saying other people are hearing it on their TV as well at home, just FYI.
Maybe we should stop for a moment and see if PAC TV can help us with this loop.
We're gonna break for just a minute here while we're trying to fix this. All right, I think, I think we're good. Okay, I don't know where we were. I, I think, okay, the road closure for a block party on Woodland Ave. Is there anything, any additional information other than what I just said? All right, does anybody have any questions, comments, or if not, a motion?
Sure. I move to approve the request for road closure for a block party with the following conditions. Access for emergency vehicles be maintained at all times. The petitioner secures barricades and road closed signs from the Kingston Highway Department to be erected during the event at the intersection of Woodland Avenue at White Pine Lane and then the intersection of Woodland Avenue at Country Way. Notification made by the petitioner to the neighborhood residents that are affected by the road closure.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, I.
Him, I.
Don, I.
Missy, I just had a quick question though. I think there was something that Chief had put in, in addition to that. So I don't know if we need to read it or if it just goes as is.
Well, there's a motion on the floor and.
We can amend it.
Yeah.
Tyler, Tyler, I.
I would just, yeah, the, the gentleman in the booth just needs to turn the volume up when Tyler's ready to speak. He's all set.
Yep, we heard it.
Sorry.
All right, so what was the, what was?
There was something that, it's in here. Maybe Chief, and it, there was a recommendation for police detail for it, but it was an addition.
Chief. Could be just me.
Yeah, this one, this one.
This one says, adopt the board's motion from last year with no objection.
Okay.
And I think the.
And then the second email was for the whole close.
Okay, sorry. All right, so we're, we're good.
Tyler's eye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Just do non audible. Thumbs up, thumbs down.
My goodness. All right.
All right, next item, review and sign an agreement for payment in lieu of personal property taxes summary of terms with Ring Road Solar LLC. Keith, do you wanna?
Sure, give me a quick, quick update. So this solar agreement was brought forward at the, at the spring 2024 town meeting, was approved by town meeting. The, the, the voters at town meeting also approved at that meeting, the authority of the Board of Assessors, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator having the authority to sign this. This could have probably been, been just a housekeeping type thing that was signed in the selectman's office, but just to be safe, brought it forward tonight at a regular meeting. This is a solar pilot agreement that, that is both in Kingston and in Plimpton, if you recall. Initially, there was 2.72 megawatts proposed for the town of Kingston that has been reduced significantly to less than a quarter of a megawatt. Excuse me, so the, the, the payment was based on a $16,500 per megawatt charge or payment lieu of taxes that's in line with solar.
Can you all hear me?
I can hear you Tyler, but not them.
I can't hear the other.
We cannot hear you on Zoom. And I, I got pinged by somebody else that says that I cannot hear you at home from cable either.
Turn down the run mic.
Oh, this is Sheila. I can't hear the other. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, nobody can, I guess, hear at home either right now. So we'll see if they can figure it out.
We're, we're only gonna do like one more item and then adjourn. We're just gonna.
Can, it's okay. Can, can people hear me right now? Can I get a phone?
I can hear you on Zoom.
I, they can hear me. Yeah, you can hear right here. I'm not, oh, my audio is good. That's fine. That's, that's fine. So.
We can hear you. I don't think you can hear me.
All right. We're gonna do one quick item and then we're probably gonna have to reschedule the rest of the stuff.
So I logged out, logged back in, just so you guys know, so that works fine.
Want to see if they can hear the chief. It's gonna be the. So did Tyler hear you?
Tyler, you can hear us now, right?
I can, I can hear you now, yep.
Okay, so we're gonna be huddling around my laptop for the first, a part of this meeting.
Chief.
Come join us.
All right. Yeah.
Up to him.
All right, so then why don't we just do the one quick thing and then, all right.
So I, do, do we want to push off his goals and objectives or did you want to?
Do you want to push off his goals and objectives for two weeks or did somebody want to make a motion? Did we want to talk about it and make questions, then maybe postpone after two weeks?
I would probably just say we just do the one, whatever is required. Get that done and then be done with the meeting since we have no technology right now.
So Chief, apologize for that, but we're holding off a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So then. Yeah, we'll do both.
The both appointments, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll do both of those. So we're gonna move right to the additional items. Number one.
And five.
Yeah. And that's going to be the appointment of a finance director, town accountant, and also the appointment of an outreach coordinator. So due to the resignation of Finance Director Town Accountant Carol McCoy, the position was advertised and interviews have been held. After the recruitment process, Mr. Hickey, Town Administrator, is requesting, requesting the hiring Kathleen Barrett. Barrett, thank you for the position. Keith, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I'm just making this.
Any objections from wage and personnel last night? Excellent.
Excellent. All right, we're very excited to have you. Yep. Any, any questions before we take a vote?
No.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Kathleen Barrett to, sorry, I keep saying it wrong. Barrett, Barrett. To the position of Finance Director Town Accountant, a Schedule D 13 sub 10 as part of wage and personnel by law with anticipated start date of August 12th, 2024, consistent with the terms of the authored letter.
Second. All right, all those in favor, Eric, I.
Don, I.
Missy, I.
Tyler, I.
Excellent. Welcome aboard.
Thank you all, Eric. Thank you.
Due to the resignation of the outreach coordinator at Council on Aging, we have, the position has been vacant since August of 2023. After the recruitment process, the Director of Elder Affairs is requesting, requesting the hiring of Jennifer Stires to the position.
And as a reminder, this is not a new position and this was in the budget for this specific year.
Thank you for that. Any, any questions or comments before we make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Jennifer Stires to the position of Outreach Coordinator, a Schedule D 6 step 2 as part of the Wage Personnel Dialogue with an anticipated start date of August 5th, 2024, consistent with the terms of the offer letter.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, I.
Him, I.
Don, I.
Missy, I.
Tyler, I.
Before we adjourn, since I think Sheila is on, is she on?
She is.
Yes. Do you want to go ahead since we're here? Let's go ahead and do number three, the appointment to the.
I am on vacation, so you know, it's all good. Just log in for that. It's all good.
I'm calling you in from vacation, Sheila.
So we, we have vacancies within both committees, the Affordable Housing Trust and the Historical Commission. Sheila Vaughn requested an appointment with Affordable Housing Trust. And Linda Regosta had requested an appointment with the Historical Commission. We actually met last week, the Affordable Housing Trust, and took a vote then to approve, to appoint Sheila Vaughn. So that motion is in our package. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
And Sheila was the Selectman Representative on the Affordable Housing Trust as well, so she's, she's used to serving on that board, right?
And it's a lot of.
Absolutely. Happy, happy to do it again.
Any motions?
Move the Board of Selectmen appoint Sheila Vaughn to the Affordable Housing Trust effective immediately until June 30th, 2026, and amend the recently approved declaration of trust to include Sheila Vaughn.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, I.
Him, I.
Don, I.
Missy, I.
Tyler, I.
And a motion for the Historical, Historical Commission.
Move the Board of Selectmen appoint Linda Rivas to the Historical Commission effective moving late until June 30th, 2027.
All those in favor, Eric, I.
Him, I.
Don, I.
Missy, I.
Tyler, I.
Do you want to do the gas inspector since we're here? All right, keep going. So we have, we have reappointments within the board packet. We have an annual reappoint, reappointment for Plumbing and Gas Inspector Doug Hathorn.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve or appoint Douglas Hawthorne as Plumbing and Gas Inspector until June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, I.
Don, I.
Missy, I.
Tyler, I.
Keith, do you want to do any updates or should we follow that?
I would just. Yeah.
Unless it's immediate, I guess. The only thing I would say, if people are talking a lot about the traffic on the water main, I don't know if you want to.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
So the one thing I guess to make people aware of, obviously with a lot of traffic up on Main Street, Route 3A, near Camp because of the water project up there, the Water Department, when they presented Mass DOT in the wintertime with a proposal for construction and getting a road open permit, one of the, one of the items that was included at that point was a request to detour traffic to reduce the congestion up in that general area. Mass DOT did not approve a detour for this construction project. So town staff, specifically the police chief, fire chief and I, as well as the Public Works, our streets, trees and parks. Superintendent has been working with and reaching out to members of Mass DOT, seeking a a reconsideration of that detour. Ultimately, Mass DOT appears to have allowed three detours. They'll be starting, in all likelihood, they don't have an exact date yet, but probably next Monday. There'll be detours depending on what portion of 3A the construction is in. We'll provide information on our website tomorrow, a map. I will also be sending letters out to all the residents on the side streets that detours will be or vehicles will be relocated to during the detour. We'll also be setting up a reverse 911 to that area as well, and I'll like tomorrow or Thursday. So apologize for any inconvenience for the people who live on some of the side streets off of Route 3A. But the, the congestion that's there now really is problematic and will become even more so as the week goes on and we get a little closer to the weekend. It's important for, for town staff to be able to make sure. Uh, it's important for, for town staff to be able to make sure that uh public safety vehicles can, can um drive through that area without any significant uh delays. Uh, so we're trying to reduce the uh, the amount of traffic in that area will, will certainly help that, so we apologize for any inconvenience. Um, and we'll provide more information on our website and directly to residents impacted uh later on this week. If anybody has any questions, absolutely feel, feel free to call the town op, town administrator's office. Uh, we'd be happy to provide any, any information we have. Thank you.
Um, before we adjourn, one more question, the Silver Lake ARBA allocations, do we need to do that tonight? There's no rush.
Well, no, the allocation defined, um.
Sure, question you have about the school committee vacancy.
Yeah, I was gonna, sorry, there is a, I wanna look forward now, there is a, a uh Kingston School Committee vacancy um due to a recent resignation, there's one year left on a term. I've been in communication with the superintendent, at this point, it appears as though we're going to uh ask for, for individuals to apply for the position. And the board of selectmen and Kingston School Committee will have a joint meeting um tentatively set for the board meeting on the twenty seventh, I believe, of, of August, so um we're just waiting for confirmation from the Kingston School Committee to that they're available on twenty seventh of August. Uh, so we'll advertise that for a date of probably the week before um for candidates who are interested, it's been a letter, a letter of interest to uh, to the board of selectmen and to the Kingston School Committee, and, and it'll be a discussion or joint meeting and ultimately a decision that night.
All right, uh, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
During the regular session.
Oh, yeah. Oh.
Here. There.
I move board of selectmen, uh, no, never mind, wrong one.
Yep.
Uh, adjourn to, I, I move. Yeah, I move board of selectmen recess to executive session to not return to open session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declare.
Second.
Right. Topic is litigate, uh, lit- lit- potential litigation, uh, litigation with uh high funds.
Okay.
All right. Can I get a second? I'll accept that. Okay.
You'll accept it, okay, uh, all those in favor, Eric, I.
Him, I.
Don, I.
Missy, I.
Tyler, I.
Um, and I just wanna say just quickly, uh, we apologize to the public, there's some power issues at the local scene, so this is kinda, this was as quick, quick of a solution as we could get, so.
Right.